Good evening, welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13. School Board meeting for Tuesday, April 23rd. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome everybody. Don, can you do the roll call for us tonight since Laura's not here?
Samra?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Palmer? Seaberson?
Here.
Lewis? Superintendent Kelly?
Here.
Thank you, Don. Our mission statement, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next up would be the approval of the agenda. If I could get a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Holla?
Second.
Holla and Lauren, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, also in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Announcements, April 30th at 6:00 PM there'll be an ad hoc subcommittee media on commu- subcommittee on community engagement here in the training room. May 14th at 7:00 PM, regular school board meeting. May 21st at 5:00 PM, school board listening session. Also at May 21st at 5:30, a school board work session. May 27th, which is a Monday, there's no school, it's Memorial Day. And then May 28th at 7:00 PM, there'll be a regular school board meeting. Next up would be correspondence. Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence this evening?
Mr. Chair and members, there's no correspondence this evening.
Okay, thank you. Communication to the Board, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The Board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration follow-up. The Board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Okay, we'll go ahead and move forward, nobody to speak. Next up would be the consent agenda, which includes the personnel report and the treasurer's report for February of 2019. If I get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Natty?
Second.
And Lauren, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, also in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Next up would be acknowledgement of contributions. If I get a motion to move that forward? Start with that.
So moved.
Lauren?
Second.
Holla? I'll read it and then open it for discussion. Acknowledgement of contributions resolution, whereas Minnesota Statute 123B .02 permits school boards to receive for the benefits of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the Board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the school board of Columbia Heights Independent School District 13 that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $3,015. Under detailed background, the following donation was made to Columbia Heights, the High School Scholarship Program by Pat Johnson. It was $2,000. And a donation under value unkind of a classroom items to Highland Elementary by donors choose from Miss Lunders' classroom. Estimated value $1,015. Total fiscal 2018-2019 monetary contributions to date, $109,495. Any discussion, comments?
Thank you.
Absolutely, very generous.
As always greatly appreciated.
Always appreciated.
All right, there's no further discussion, this is a resolution, so, Don, if you could roll call again, please.
Samra?
Hi.
Larkin? Hi.
Mueller?
Aye.
Seaberson? Aye.
Okay, very curious, thank you. Thanks, Don. Next up, reports from members of the Board. Board members will report on Board activity since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. You ready with that, Lauren?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. I attended the Columbia Heights High School Choir Concert. That was their final concert of the academic year, so it was great to see them perform. Also attended the school board work session last week. Also attended the Metro ExU Annual Meeting that was last week as well. Attended the Columbia Academy Academic Awards Night. I don't know if any of you were there, were you there? That was amazing. So I just have to say, they had 357 students who got on the A or B honor roll. So it was really a great night of celebrating the achievements of those students. And the Columbia Academy Marimba Band performed, and they are absolutely incredible. They, I'm just wowed and just moved every time I hear them play. So it was really a great opportunity to hear them give a concert as well as part of that night. And then also attended the synchronized swim team, had a routine meet this evening, so I was able to attend that before the Board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Mary?
I was also at the work session last week. Had some conversations with various Board members and community members. Was able to attend baseball and softball games. And then also attended AMSD, the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, where we talked a lot about upcoming things that are happening in the State House and Senate that could impact funding and different things happening. Superintendent Kelly included that in your Board packet for last week. But lots of interesting things happening, and I'm sure we're gonna hear a little bit more there. Dr. Fry was there, there he was, and they did some things that were very fascinating to you. So I'm sure he was really impressed with third-party billing conversations, so. And then I had the chair meeting right before this.
Okay, thanks. Holla?
I have had conversations with community members, and I'm working through listening to "The Trust Edge" by Hor Sager that Director Palmer lent to me. It's very interesting.
It's a good book. Thank you. I, last week, I attended the Teacher of the Year recognition. Was at the work session last week, had a meeting with the superintendent. And then the chair meeting prior to this. And that concludes my report. Next up would be the superintendent's report.
Mr. Chair and members, I also attended the Teacher of the Year reception. Congratulations to Peg Nelson, the Valley View, from Valley View. She is the 2019 Teacher of the Year and then all the other semifinalists. It was fun to attend with Member Mueller, the ExU Annual Meeting, and I also attended the Executive Board Meeting. And I have to say that during the general membership meeting, I was really surprised and quite delighted at the big programs and offerings. They only did slivers of them, but all of the things that they've expanded into for programs and services, so I found that very interesting. I did attend the North Park and the High School construction meetings, and we had an executive construction meeting today, and things are on track. And we're talking about when we can come back to the Board and tell you a little bit more about that, and that will probably be more in the June, in the June area. We've been heavily involved in pre-K through 12 administrative staffing meetings right now, because it's that time of year. This afternoon, I met with the superintendent from 916, Connie Hayes, and we were talking about ALC concerns and financial constraints up there too, because everybody's feeling it. The, the good news is that enrollment is robust, and not just from our district or Spring Lake Park, but from other districts. But it does, it is, it is presenting some issues that we're gonna have to deal with, and when I know more about it, I will talk to you as a Board. I met with the City of Columbia Heights City Manager. It was a very interesting meeting. We talked about common issues and concerned, and concerns, and I'll put more about that in the update on Friday. And I attended the school board work study session, and I've had con- and the chair meeting before this, and I've had contacts with most of you between the meetings, so I'm gonna thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up would be the legislative update, and I'm just gonna read a text that I received from Carolyn Lane. And they're not gonna be able to make it tonight. Her text is both the House and the Senate will be in session well into the evening, so once again, we won't be able to come to the school board meeting, so sorry. However, I do wanna let you know, I am bringing the documentary, Love Them First, to the Capitol for a showing next Monday morning. Besides senators, representatives, and staff, it is also an open invite to all education people who can make it. You can Google it for the trailer. Carol Levin made it last year, last school year at Lucy Lane Elementary in North Minneapolis. Powerful story of the challenges and joys of an inner-city school. Real life right here across the river. She'll send a flyer soon, but it's 9:30 Monday, 9:30 AM, Monday, April 29th, in the 7th Building Room, 1200. So again, she will, they will not be able to make it tonight, and they send their apologies. So we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is the pre-K curriculum recommendation for 2019-2020.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, and members of the Board. I am here with Tiffany Grims-Farkas, our early childhood manager, to present a recommendation for pre-K curriculum. As we went through the process, we had our district mission of all belong, all succeed in mind, as well as our core values, especially focusing in on excellence, collaboration, and innovation. Tonight, we are here to present a recommendation as an informational item for our pre-K curriculum, and then we will be back, May 14th, to present it as an action item, asking for approval. As we began, began this process, it truly was a collaboration between early childhood and teaching and learning. So it's been wonderful to work with Tiffany and really look at the needs of pre-K and how it aligns with our K through 5 program. So we began our process by starting to look at the effectiveness of our current curriculum. We looked at data, we gathered input from staff, looked at observational, as well as looking at other research behind it. Tiffany and I then looked at different possibilities by looking at the research and different districts, and narrowed it down to two options, which were the creative curriculum and opening the world of learning, OWL, which is our current curriculum, but an updated version. From there, we conducted a needs assessment, where we presented a survey to our teachers and staff, or special education, early childhood staff, and asked them, what are the needs that they see, what are the priorities for them? Really focusing in on those early childhood indicators of progress, as well as the needs that they see for our students and supporting our families in pre-K. We continued in March and worked with the staff and analyzed the two different options that we had to look, look at which one actually fit our needs the best. And our teachers provided unanimous recommendation for the creative curriculum. And Tiffany has a stack full of recommendations from them, a lot of notes. Then we moved forward earlier this month and presented it to our World's Best Workforce, who also looks at our curriculum and looks at different areas of data, and gathered input from them and what they wanna see in a pre-K curriculum. We provided the creative curriculum to them and talked them through it and asked for their input on that as well. And they agreed and had the same recommendation as the teachers, that that would be their recommendation to bring to the school board. So if approved, our goals would be moving forward to purchase a creative curriculum, looking at our next year, 2019-2020, and then providing training for our staff in August, but then also throughout the year. Because we know as we implement a new curriculum, we want to continue to gather data, gather input, and provide as much support as we can.
And then with the creative curriculum, the creative curriculum is a research-based curriculum, and it's something that is aligned with our Minnesota Early Childhood Indicators of Progress, which is our early learning standards for the state, and it's also aligned with the Minnesota kindergarten standards. This includes family involvement, a variety of strategies, it's designed to support all learners. And it includes multiple learning areas, 10 developmental areas, that we focus on in early childhood. And it also focuses on the what, why, and how to teach. And then some of the feedback from our teachers include that this provides opportunities for teacher input, it is child-led and goal-based, and then it is tied to our goal assessment, which is our current, which is what we're piloting in some of our classrooms, our pre-K classrooms. And we're gonna be fully implementing the goal assessment tool moving forward into the next school year. It is user-friendly, and staff were impressed by the continuum, continuum of progression, which is this curriculum and assessments designed from birth to grade three. So we're able to track students if we are using it in our younger age, age groups. It also is inclusive of all and provides differentiation for students. And then as Tara had mentioned, our implementation plan, if approved, would be that we would be purchasing the materials July 2019, and then we would be providing professional development in August, which would be over 10 hours of training, and then actually starting the implementation in September in our classrooms, and then providing that ongoing professional development and support throughout the school year. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
So you mentioned that it, it lends itself to differentiation, or it includes differentiated parts?
Correct.
Does it differentiate from more than just student levels? Does it differentiate for diversities, abilities?
Yes, it does break it down, with students that are in special education, it'll break down the, the objectives into smaller, or smaller levels, or, um, levels that will be assessed differently. It also provides differentiation for our EL learners, so we focus on language acquisition of our students too with using this curriculum.
Is there anything with, like, diversity, like, any of the materials that the kids will look at?
It is, it is, yes.
Pictures of somebody that looks like them?
It is bi- we do have bilingual with Spanish, and then there's also, there are pictures, the books that it provides are in multiple languages and multiple cultures, so it does provide that piece too.
One thing we ensured in our assessment was one of the areas was that our students can see themselves, but also learn about each other. So that was one of the areas that they had to look into as they were analyzing it.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just, I don't know if you can go back a couple of slides, if that was related to the, that one right there. The figure on the right there, is that kind of the focus of some of the curriculum in terms of the dramatic play toy, you know, toys and games? So we're focusing on, on playing as part of learning in addition to, you know, some of the, the library time and science and all of those things. And if you can talk a little bit about that?
Correct. So this, yeah, this figure is from teaching, or teaching strategies, created, the creative curriculum. And so the inside piece is where it talks about those differentiate, those different learning areas. That is what we wanna see in the classroom. And we do, so this curriculum is really focusing on, through play, but it's also has literacy, cognition, math, mathematics, science, technology, all those components, all encompassing learning through play. So when the teachers design their lesson plans, it's really focusing on the environment, and then, and then based on the data from the assessment, focusing on what they wanna, what specific instruction for each, each student.
Anybody else? Okay, when will this be coming back to us?
May 14th, it will return as an action item for recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up, the Northeast Metro 916 Service Agreement.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly. I have the opportunity to talk about Northeast Metro 916 Special Education Related Services Agreement. Typically, this comes to you in June and gets approved then, however, we moved that up to ensure that we are allowing this to still continue here in Columbia Heights. So, our mission here is that we create worlds of opportunities for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And the two core values that I wanna focus on tonight is excellence, being our best, expecting our best every day, as well as collaboration, working together for common goals. The Board's gonna be asked to take some action on the agreement for Intermediate District 916 to provide special education-related staffing to the students enrolled in Columbia Heights for the 2019-2020 school year at the next school board meeting, which is May 14th, 2019. Just a little background, Intermediate District 916, this is from their website, it's one of three intermediate districts here in the state of Minnesota, and 916 serves 4,000 students through shared programming, from career and tech, to special ed services, to ALCs, and to elementary education. Through these resources and talents and ideas, Northeast Metro provides cost-effective, experts and reliable services for 14-member school districts, districts, which we are one, and the students and families we collaborate with. The focus for this evening is gonna be special ed and related services. So the first thing with special education settings is that Intermediate 916 provides specialized programming and supports to support students across a continuum of services from setting, primarily in setting four, the separate public day-school setting four programs. We currently have 43 students enrolled in setting four programs across seven programs in 916. I'm saying programs a lot, I apologize. During the 1819 school year, we have four students who transitioned back to a less restrictive environment within Columbia Heights. And again, we are proud to continue to say that we have graduates from the programs there in 916. We currently have four who will be graduating this June, and we're very excited about that. So that's special ed settings, kind of providing that's continuum of service from no special ed to setting one and two resource, to setting three, to setting four programming. For us here in Columbia Heights, that's really additionally important is the related services piece. And again, 916 makes medically-related special ed services available to member districts. The goal is to give member districts flexibility in meeting the special needs of students through accessing the expert service providers to provide direct support, consultation, training, and technical guidance. And these related services, they're focused on student needs and our needs here in the district. And they're defined by the number of students, the type of support needed, or the training requirements for school sites. So here's an example of kind of within 9, within Columbia Heights, what we have in regards to our related services here from 916. So our physical therapist is through 916, as well as a deaf and hard-of-hearing teacher, our autism specialist, the PhD teacher, the physically and health-disabled, blind visually impaired teacher, occupational therapist, our certified occupational therapist assistant. Again, I repeated myself, occupational therapist there, licensed school nurse, a school health specialist, the RN and LPNs, as well as a speech and language pathologist. We have 16 staff members who provide services, related services from 916 here in Columbia Heights. So many times, when you're perhaps working with the health service provider, a majority of them here in Columbia Heights are from 916. We have two that are not, but majority of them are. So just so you know that they impact students, whether general ed or special ed as well. Again, like I said earlier, we're gonna be asked, I'm gonna ask, come back on May 14th to ask for some action on this agreement through 916 to have them continue to provide special education-related staffing to stu- to students enrolled in Columbia Heights. Thank you.
Do we have any questions?
I just have one question on the, the staffing, the 16 staff members. Are those staff members specifically here at Columbia Heights, or is it that they may be here for part of the day and at another district for part of the day?
Majority are here most of the day. There are some of those technical, kind of, the related services, like the blind and visually impaired who are here for halftime, or Pete, my, our physical therapist is here at .5, so half of her time is here, and she's housed at the high school, and then she goes to other districts, mainly one other district that she services, so. But again, the healthcare specialist, our licensed school nurse, the speech pathologist, the OT, the COTA are here with us. But again, some of those BVI, DHH, our little part-time here within us, within, within Columbia Heights.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
This is an annual thing, is that correct?
This is an annual thing. It usually happens in June, I think last year it came in June, and then we, I brought it back to the Board in August. So I asked the executive director over at 916, Dan Neadits, to bring that forth earlier, so we could ensure that we can have this continued service.
In a sense, it's an agreement between us and 916 for services provided, and we're gonna pay them and that kind of thing, so.
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, we'll see this next month.
Thank you.
Class size study.
Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly. This evening, I'm here to present the Metro ExU Annual Class Size Study for this school year 2018-19. Our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. I'll be focusing on excellence and collaboration as part of our core values. This evening, I will be providing information to the school board, and it will not be a governance, part of a governance question. So first, a little bit about what the class size study is and how data is collected, and then I'll present data. So Metro ExU is part of, has 28 school districts, and so we're really looking at class sizes across the region. And data is shared over the last five years, so looking at trend data this evening since 2014-15 school year to this school year. All of the class size data is based on October 1st, 2018 counts. So as you know, throughout the school year, class sizes fluctuate, students come and go in different areas, and so each year is looking at October 1st. The categories are elementary, and then junior secondary, which is middle school or junior high, and then senior secondary, which is high school. So that's how I'll be presenting the, the categories. Again, Metro ExU conducted the study, they're the Metro Educational Cooperative Service Unit. There was an electronic, it was an electronic submission of, of data, all of the superintendents were invited to participate. And then the district compiled the data and returned it to Metro ExU for a process and, and analysis. Some points about this study, consistent grade groupings have not been used for each district. So in some districts, 6th grade is in elementary, and in others, it's in middle school. So that's just some pieces to note. At the junior and senior secondary levels, only the subject areas that are most typically offered will be included in the study. So with 28 school districts participating, it's hard to be all-inclusive, they'd rather be more comprehensive. And then the other thing to note is that in some cases, data, some of the districts reported data including special education students and sometimes excluding special education students. So that's not noted in the graphs that I'm gonna show you, so it's just something to keep in the back of our mind. All right, so we're gonna start, there's gonna be a lot of data on the screen, with elementary region-wide class size trends. So what we're looking at, starting for each column from the left to the right, is the left, kind of grayish colors, 2014-15 school year, moving all the way to this school year in the red for 2018-19. And then across the bottom, you can see elementary kindergarten through 6th grade. And then on the far right, there's combo or ungraded, so that might be multi-grade levels in a classroom, and then special education. So as you can see, the trends over the last five years across the region, kind of lower, lower class sizes at the younger ages, and then it seems like everywhere 5th grade is, is big, is what we're seeing. And then also note, special education for the last two years is high. So just some of the trends, as I mentioned, kindergarten, 1st grade, combo or ungraded, report a five-year low class size, and then 5th grade was a five-year high class size across the region. So next, this is junior secondary, region-wide, across the different subject areas, art, business ed, marketing, family and consumer science, and so on and so forth across, and then similar, starting in 2014 up to 2018-19. So you can see in the red, which is this school year, some significant increases. Looks like it's, in many cases, significant increases, so for example, interdisciplinary courses, moving from 25.3 up to 30, so a difference of about, on average, five students more in the class as compared to last year. Social studies, looks, the red's quite a bit higher, but if you look at the data, it's about one additional student. So from last year, 28.3, to this year, 29.3. So it's important to look at the numbers and then the graphs as well. So what are these graphs telling us? That many courses, art, business ed, marketing, family and consumer science, health, interdisciplinary, language arts or English, math, music, PE or physical education, science, social studies, tech ed, and world languages, reported a five-year high class size across the region. And then looking at the four core subject areas, language arts and math are consistently lower in class size across the region as compared to science and social studies. And again, that's for junior, our, our middle school, junior high. All right, moving to the senior secondary or high school level. You can see some similar trends as with junior, but most notably there, you can see the music class. Class sizes last year, 39.3 average class size, and it's popped up to 44.8 this year across the region. And then, so what is, you know, what are the trends telling? And then, so what is, you know, what are the trends telling us? Five-year highs similarly to the junior high or the middle school, many of the, many, many of the courses listed there. And then looking again at the four core subject areas, with senior high, social studies have consistently had the highest class sizes over math, English, and science. All right, so looking at Columbia Heights Public Schools, we really focus on a range of class sizes for our guidelines. Pre-K, the voluntary pre-K four is twenty, and that's based on the voluntary pre-K program. But with the primary grades, so the younger grades, kindergarten through second grade, really looking at ranges between twenty and twenty-two, or twenty to twenty-four, as you can see there. And then with those intermediate grades, three through five, looking at, you know, trying to hover around twenty-five to thirty. And then overall, looking at the entire building, we try to have a ratio of about twenty-four to one with the younger kids' classes being smaller. So now we are comparing Columbia Heights to the rest of the region. So Columbia Heights is depicted there in blue, and the rest of the region is in orange. So you can see, overall, our elementaries are about less than one student on average, higher than the rest of the region, where our junior secondary or middle school is about two students fewer, and then at the senior high, it's about the same, a percentage of a student per class. So we're going to dive a little bit deeper into the Columbia Heights data as compared to the region. All right, so here, just depicting some of our neighboring or local districts, you can see how we compare. With Columbia Heights is the far-left blue, and then the other school districts following. So we are not the lowest class size compared to some of our neighbors, but we're also not the highest class size compared to some of our neighbors, as you can see. All right, so digging a little bit deeper, let's look at the elementary grade levels. So Columbia Heights, again, in the blue compared to other schools in the region or other districts in the region. You can see fifth grade, and fifth grade is pretty significantly higher, about three students on average. So of course, earlier in the school year, as you know, the school board approved freezing enrollment in fifth grade levels at both Valley View and Highland because they were noticeably at capacity. So there still was space at North Park, so those were open. But that left us with a little bit higher there. You can see third grade as well, about three students per class higher. Okay, elementary, so again, the same grade levels, but comparing it to other school districts. Columbia Heights is the far-left blue. Fifth grade, again, remains pretty high, third grade is also pretty high. And again, these are October first counts. All right, so moving to middle school. Here you can see, compared to the region, we're either on par or under for most, in most subject areas, with the exception of Phi Ed, where it's significantly higher in terms of student ratio. About eight students, as you can see. And then senior high, so our high school, how do the, how do the class sizes compare to the region? Again, it's kind of, there's not one trend necessarily, so it's mixed. We've, we're on par in many of the subject areas, we're under in some areas, and then we're over slightly in other areas, as you can see. So that's the data I have for you this evening.
Questions?
Would you say, oh, sorry. Would you say, like, our current class size structure is facilitating the classroom environments we hope to accomplish?
Yeah, I would say that-
I know that, is that too broad for this topic, or, I mean, it's just the numbers, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, well, what I will say is that the superintendent receives a weekly enrollment report, and she does review that with some of the admin staff to have conversations. So the, there's a really regular pulse on enrollment, the placement center, and the levels at the classroom. And so, like I said, we needed to be responsive this year, came to the board, and did put some freezing, freezes on enrollment in certain areas when they do get too high. You know, we also keep a pulse on, you know, new developments in the community, trend, you know, enrollment influxes that may be happening, so we try to stay ahead of it. Some classrooms, you know, are either have co-teaching happening, or, so we try to keep that classroom environment conducive to learning. And then we know, really, keeping the youngest kids with the smallest class sizes is really important.
Any males?
Thank you.
Next up would be anchor program update.
All right, good evening again, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I am here to provide some information about the anchor program update. This is an informational item only, but our mission here is to create worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And here this evening, our core values is going to be collaboration and innovation. So just a reminder, the anchor program, this is an overview briefly from the presentation in December. It is a blend of day treatment for mental health services and individualized education. At the mental services include individual therapy, skills training, and group work. Students who participate in the program have individualized education programs, or IEPs, or are general ed students. And the update is regarding our therapeutic partner. We received last week in writing that our therapeutic partner, Nexus, informed us that they will not be continuing the partnership with providing the therapy for the anchor program, specifically at the Columbia Heights High School. They shared that they cannot cash flow enough to cover the costs for the therapist, and the nature of the high school program with students transitioning back into mainstream classes specifically during the therapeutic portion has contributed to this cash flow problem, and they're willing to entertain partnering with us for the middle school program. Our next steps is that we're still working with Nexus to find a resolution for providing services to both the anchor program at both the high school and middle school. We've reached out to Lee Carlson, as well as a potential partner. And it may be problematic if we're unable to find a provider who cannot cash flow to support their students.
Do we have any questions at this point? So it's something we're just kind of in flux right now, trying to figure out what the best-case scenario is for both buildings.
Yeah, to determine our path. I mean, we've been informed of this information, and we need to be responsive to determine what does that look like for us to provide that service and continue with that program.
This has not been the first year. It's been not delivering on their end since the beginning, and we thought that we could build that base. Part of it is that we have changed, and it's good for students, that we do not hold high school students in that program, and they feel that they can perhaps come out for a little bit and integrate back into the environment. And that doesn't work for Nexus, because they have a full-time person between the two buildings, and they don't have the access to the students, and then they don't have access to cash flow either. So it's the nature of our program, and we found it to be good for the students. And we have made this definitive rule that you must be in the program first before you can integrate out. You can't just take a few classes and then be in the program. So it's kind of a conundrum. It's not unusual for, to be in this situation, but it's disappointing and kind of a little disheartening at the same time. The middle school, and I think that Director Frye said that, is it's, the students are more self-contained, their attendance is more regular, and so it's an easier program to get your hands around. But the issue with that is we share staff between the two programs. So wanted to give everybody a heads up, we've been trying valiantly for a number of years now, both in the planning and in the delivery. And so when this broke a week or so ago, we wanted to make sure that you were informed that we're working on it, but it's not resolved at this time.
Has this been communicated to the parents who have students in the anchor program? I can imagine that's a population where change and trying to find, you know, the services that best meet their kids is challenging, so giving them as much time as possible to make whatever arrangements they need to make if something hasn't worked out.
Before we give them a definitive answer, we would like to see what, if we can find other collaborative partners or a solution for this. So we wanted to give the board a heads up that this is happening, but we're not recommending that the program at this point is closing, but it, there is, there is a stress involved there, a financial stress for them and a student stress for us. And so if, in point of fact, we decided that this were going to happen for next year, we would immediately, as soon as a definitive program, a decision was made on the program, we'd let you know, and we would also let parents start to know. They just told us this about a week and a half ago, and so we've been kind of negotiating back and forth and then looking for another provider. So it might be just seamless for the students involved, or there may be a change. Good question, thank you.
We found this program, I'm sorry, sorry. We found this program to be successful, correct? This is a program that, that you, yeah?
Yes, the data would indicate that we have students whose attendance has have increased, they are earning credits. We've got four who will be graduating this year, so that's exciting news.
And they're also, their socially-emotional piece has a lot more friendships and a lot more integration into the school, and just the very fact that they can integrate back into the school is a success. So yes, overall, I think it's a program that's good for students.
Yes.
Great, thanks, Chair. Next up would be programs and positions updates.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Tonight we're here to talk about some program and position update. First, we want to say that the school district has an obligation to balance the budget on an annual basis, and that each year, the school board directs district administration and the superintendent to make recommendations for the efficiency, curtailment, discontinuance of positions and programs in order to balance the school district budget. All of these efficiencies, curtailments, and discontinuance are required to come in at or under budget as approved by the school board. So the philosophy attached to the process is to strive to keep the program and position efficiencies, curtailments, and discontinuances as far away from the classroom as possible and within reason, and to provide a well-rounded education for all of our students. Despite efficiency reductions, we strive to keep as many of our quality staff employed. The district is sensitive to the privacy of our employees during this process. Sometimes efficiencies and reductions are outside of the district control, including insufficient funding at the local, state, and federal levels, and the growing cross-subsidy in special education. With this being said, there needs to be efficiencies, curtailments, and discontinuance of positions and programs, and this spring during the staffing process, we're forecasting the following.
The first change that you'll see is going to be in the food service area, and currently we are with Sodexo for our food service, so we contract out the food service management of our child nutrition program. All of the other people that are in food service are district employees, and so we have a manager from Sodexo, and we will be, we did not renew the contract, so we will be posting a child nutrition or food service manager, so you will see that coming. So it isn't necessarily a savings, but it is a shift in service, and we think it'll provide a better service to our students.
Also, it does include grant positions, so there are some grant positions that are up this school year. So we do eliminate any positions or discontinued positions tied to those grants, and then once, if we do get the grant back, then we would reinstate those positions. Annually, we do look at the pre-K and kindergarten sections, we look at the enrollments, the actual enrollment we have for nineteen-twenty, and project our sections based on that number. And as kids enroll throughout the summer, we do bring back sections, usually in kindergarten. We try to before school starts, they don't get too attached to their teacher and then get moved, but we have to see the kids in the classroom are actually enrolled. We are looking at district and non-affiliated positions and administrative positions for realignment and reductions. We have non-affiliated agreements that are set to expire this June. We also have teacher contract negotiations that are starting this spring, since their contract will also expire in June. Due to the realignment of director positions, we're going to look at the clerical positions that are tied to directors. We have some clerical in the district center that are tied to both four different directors, so we're trying to stream like that and have them actually report to their director who supervises the work.
Yep, we're also looking at English learner accountability, so state, federal accountability. So looking at K two, we may have a greater emphasis on heritage Spanish at the elementary level, which might mean less emphasis on Spanish as a foreign language in kindergarten and through second grade.
And as always, there'll be staff reductions due to staff cut for performance if they're on a long-term sub-line licensure, and then also we do have resignations, so there are some positions throughout attrition that will just be cut. And then some other factors we are looking at is our health insurance premiums have increased this next year. We have a special education cross-subsidy which is going up, and then we have increasing transportation and fuel costs, too, that we need to account for.
So with all of that being said, there is also some good news to share. The district has been fortunate enough to receive the Title IV, which is Federal Student Support and Academic Enrichment Grant. This is the first time we've received this grant, so we're not sure what the future holds in terms of continuing to receive the grant, but the district plans to use the new funding to support specialist staffing for the twenty nineteen school year, nineteen-twenty school year.
Any questions?
Comment more than a question, I think. I appreciate the effort that you've put in to bring in this forward. We had a significant conversation at a work session about how do we let people know what's going on without being able to let people know what's going on to some degree. And you touched on it early, Lindsay, I think it's people understand that when it comes, we're the ones that set the budget, and then you guys have to, with what's in the best interest of all of the students, make some really, really difficult decisions. And hoping that people understand, they're not going to hear about it before, if there's a, if there's a staff member that's going to not be renewed or discontinued or whatever it may be, as they should be, they're going to be the first one to know that, not someone else because they wanted to know about this program or they think so. I know, Pat, previously it's been, well, we should add input about this program, or this one, or that curriculum, or whatever. And unfortunately, that's not always what we're able to do because of, and it's data privacy, but in my opinion, it's also just common courtesy that, you know, someone finds out about a position before everybody else does. So I know we asked you to come back and talk about the process and, you know, discuss the things that you're able to, and you've done, I think, a really good job of presenting, but at the same time, as I said, Lindsay, you mentioned, there's just some stuff that other people, you know, the way the system is set up, they don't get to be a part of that, and so, and it's unfortunate, but at least if they know that, that's not unfortunate, it's something that probably shouldn't be, but at least if they understand that there's reasons behind it, and I think you guys have presented some good information as to the reasoning behind that tonight, so thank you for taking the time to put all this together.
Hi, I'm Chair Larkin, and members, I have one more comment about the good news on Title IV, because last year and in other years, we've had to really tie our specialists to prep time only because our Title V went away. And so this year, for some reason, which was great, thank you, everybody, we qualified for Title IV funding, which means we can reinstate our literacy through the arts program. So that means we will not have to tie those specialists necessarily to prep time, which will, that, it is a big win for everybody. And I, and I just like, it gives joy to my heart because we have our heads in the academics and our hearts in the arts, and when this came in, we thought, whoa, this is great. Now, it's not forever, but it's for now. And so I think that we'll be able to, instead of having painstakingly figure out every minute for every specialist, we'll be able to reinstate our literacy through the arts program, which will be great overall. In my opinion, in my humble opinion.
I agree, yes, you can speak for me, I agree.
Any else, questions or comments?
Yes, I, I wanted to thank you, I think, as, as Chair Larkin had said, you know, this is obviously a, a long conversation that we had during our work session last week. And I appreciate you putting something together to come as we start, kind of start this process. And talking about the philosophy that we have and knowing that we have the budget to balance. And I think it's important to note that you're, you know, the admin team and Superintendent Kelly are looking at, at all things. So, you know, as you said, we're looking at, at food service and, you know, then we look at transportation and you're looking at admin, support staff. And, you know, all of the, the different things that we can do. I think this was mentioned last week and it, you know, it struck then with me, and it does today, of, of taking a look at some of the difficult decisions that have to be made and the commitment to keeping those as far away from the classroom as possible. I think the commitment from the team to, to make sure our student experience and student success is number one. At the same time, looking at our, our staff and making sure that, that they have the tools and the ability to succeed in the jobs that they have, whether it be class sizes, or funding, or program support, curriculum, whatever it is that they need to be successful as well. It's, it's that, that fine balancing act we keep talking about of, of making sure that we have the dollars to do what we need to do and be appropriate with that funding. You know, we're, we're coming up to that, that point of where some, again, continued difficult decisions have to be made. But I, I want us to continue the dialogue of, of the process and the procedure and the philosophy that you talked about today, making sure that that stays forefront as, as, as these decisions are being made.
Anyone else?
I just appreciate this. Thanks so much. And I know it's hard because you, you guys can have this whole big picture view of what's happening, but it's also really personal. You know, these are people you know. It's not a very big district. And you guys know so many of the kids' names and the staff members. And I just, I think we all appreciate what a strange, but good, small-town feel we have in the school district that does present this. So we appreciate your hard work to, to do this for us.
I'm going to pick a different word besides strange, but.
Isn't that what Minnesotans say? Interesting. Yeah, strange. Yeah, okay.
Anybody else? Thanks for all your hard work, Jason.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll move on to our action items. First up is the designation of electronic transfer designees.
Hi, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Again, this is our first action item of the night. It is for electronic transfer designees, and this is only due to the change in staff. So it is designating myself and our new controller, Paulus Steele, to be able to do electronic transfers.
Okay. Give me a minute to get to that real quick.
Yep. Page fifty. So, yep, so there's a motion there.
Page forty-nine.
Forty-nine.
Hey, so board's being asked to appoint designee for the processing of electronic transfers. Designees are Denise Sinstrom, Becker Finance Operations, Paulus Steele Controller. Any motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Lauren?
Second.
Natty? Discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Precast structural and steel bids.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. This evening, I am presenting the precast structural and steel bids. That was an information item at the previous board meeting on April ninth, where we presented, it was Gary Ziffco from Carls Anderson was with me and presented the bid results for the first bid pack for a bond referendum construction project at the high school. And this is an action item. We're looking for approval. Again, listed on the sheet in front of you has who were the low bids. And we had the letter from Carls Anderson recommending these three. And there was also a question last time if we had confidence in the low bidders. Low bidder's not always the best. And again, Carls Anderson recommended and are currently working with these vendors on other projects. So, and good for the finances of this project. The bids did come under what we had budgeted for, so starting off on the right foot. So motion is for approval of bid awards for the precast, precast and structural steel.
So we'll start with a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Allah?
Again.
Lauren? The motion is to award the WS O three B structural precast bid pack to Wells Concrete Products, the WS O five dash A structural steel material only bid pack to Construction Systems, Inc., and then the WS O five B structural steel erection bid pack to High Five Erectors. And again, these were the most responsible bids with the recommendation letter from Carls Anderson. Any conversation, comments? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? And that motion carries. And then next up would be the remodeling bid package.
All right, so this is our second bid pack for the construction project at the high school with the bandroom and the remodel for the performance spaces at the high school. And as with the other bids, we come to the board first to ask approval to post those bids, those ads in the paper, so we can receive bids. And our schedule for that would be, they would go with approval tonight. They would go into the, some focus on May third, and then again on May tenth. And then we would have our sealed bid opening on May twenty-eighth.
All right. Motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Natty?
Yep.
Lauren? Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thanks for keeping this moving.
Yeah, thank you.
Next up would be conversation about the renewal of the National School Board Association membership. It's time to consider the renewal for the 2019, 2020 school year. The price has not gone up. It's $4,165 for the membership. It's the same again for this year. So we'll start by, motion is second, then open it up to discussion, so. Go for a motion.
So moved.
Allah?
Second.
Natty? Discussion.
I think this is, goes beyond just the national conference, right? This has to do with national lobbying, right, on behalf of education? And what are, what are some of the services that, maybe for people who are, why would they spend $4,000 on this? What are some of the services we might receive? Sorry, with the membership.
I, do you want to?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, yeah.
The National School Boards Association, it's right at the federal level. They're quite active, just like the Minnesota School Boards Association. So when you, when you look at that, it's, it's like a broader version of MSBA. And so they are working on policy issues, some of the policy at the federal level. Many times, some of the policy that they have an impact there will flow into the states. They try to affect funding for federal programs such as the title programs. They are involved in legislation or on critical issues as far as diversity and equity in schools. Let me see, I'm trying to think. They do provide not just the national conference, but they have trainings across the United States for, on different board topics if the board decides to, to go that route. So there's the professional development piece too. And then they also keep us apprised at the federal level on what we're doing with federal funding. So those would be a few of the things.
Yeah, I just, I've been thinking about this since I saw it on the agenda. And I just am not, I'm almost, I will be honest, I'm not sure I'm prepared to vote on this today. Just because I'd like to continue to take a look at this. And as Superintendent Kelly said, I think that there are definitely benefits to being, to this membership. But I also look at, just coming from the presentation we just had and looking for efficiencies, is this a, is this $4,000 well spent? Are we utilizing our membership to the NSBA to its fullest potential? And I think having an opportunity for the conference, I think is great because I do think that that provides some great opportunities of learning for board members and that we can bring back to the district. I just, I'm, I'm a little bit torn in terms of, you know, how this benefits us as, it doesn't benefit us as much as it could right now.
Okay. But what, what are you looking to do with it tonight? What are your thoughts? I guess I'm here, I understand what you're saying, is, is are we getting our money's worth? So are you looking for more information regarding benefits that are available to be able to rationalize?
Yeah, like, like I said, I mean, I looked, when I saw this on the agenda prior to the meeting, and I'm, in full disclosure, I didn't have enough time. And I know that we've had this every year. And I really wanted to look critically into this and kind of look at, at our role and responsibilities and the benefits. And, and I just hadn't, I, I didn't have the time to do the research that I wanted to do prior to voting on this. So I guess my question is, I mean, quite honestly, I think with four of us here, I, I put myself in a little bit of a difficult pickle. Because, you know, if I abstain from voting, you know, we have only three members that are, if you do all vote for it, you know, that puts us in a pickle. Do we, do you know what the timeline is for when we have to have this, this membership turned in?
I don't, I think we're well within the timeline for that kind of thing. And I, I would like to say though, that if we belong to this, and when it, if, it's really a, a board thing. It's really a board thing if you want to belong to the national or not. I will give you some of the things that, we do get a discount for the conference that kind of offsets the fee. So if we, if we, if, if we, we do have set that there's two members that are at liberty to go each year, we would not have that kind of, we wouldn't have that kind of, I don't know, income protection or set aside for us, and we can register for it early. There are other things that other boards have done, that this board hasn't done as much with MSBA. And one of them was, they have an entire strand that's along technology. They have another whole strand of workshops that go around diversity, and it's called the Cube. And I can't for the life of me remember, but we've had members that have been a part of the Cube group and they, and they get together as board members across the United States and really talk about issues in diversity. Other, other groups get together and talk about issues in technology. They, there's about five different subcommittees that go. And because it has been sparse, I don't think the boards have been quite as active in those areas. They sometimes happen at the national conferences, and I think everybody has been to at least one national conference. And they will have different groups meeting, but they also have groups that meet throughout the year. And so there's some of those strands that we haven't done in a number of years. So it certainly, it's the board's membership. So it certainly would be up to the board and to look into that and to really see if you value what you bring back from the national conferences too. So it's a board development thing.
I'm not seeing a due date on the bill. I'm just seeing that it's for the term of July, beginning in July.
What we do is, we'd like to get it out of the way this fiscal year, so we're not paying for two dos in, in one.
You said there's a, being a member gives us the discount for the conference. Is there a significant discount or?
It depends on what kind of, what time of year you do it. It gives you the early bird conference. It also gives you access to the hotels. Gives you access to the pre, pre-workshops that usually fill. And I can't remember right offhand what the, what the discount is. I don't know if it's a, I don't want to, yeah, it is a substantial discount, but I don't want to just pull it out of the air for you. But I know that it makes it more possible for us to spend, to send two members each, each time.
So it's a substantial difference even when you're counting the membership fee?
Yes.
Even when you count that as an expense?
It's substantial, so you could kind of, they, they don't, and it's, I don't want to say it because I can't remember what it is, but they don't directly offset one another. But it's like, okay, it, it, when times were really tough, it, we thought, okay, this is it. We'll do the membership because it will discount. We won't send as many members, but at least the members we're, we're, we are sending will have a discounted fee. But it's not a one-to-one ratio or anything.
You're saying that when we send two people a year, it costs less to do it with the membership than without.
Absolutely. Yeah. And if we do it, we get, also get an early bird discount because we're members. So then it costs, that's another discount, which I can't remember right now. Because, but it, but if it's, it's a question of what, what do you value? You know, what, I don't mean it that way. It's like, what, is this board development that's, that you want to do? Is the board development that you want to dig deeper into and look more into the organization? Or is it not? And that is completely up to the experiences that the individual board members really get when they go to the conferences. And, and as I say, it's been a while since there's been a, a board goal that everybody puts in so many hours of training. Because we used to have goals like that, and it was like, it was expectation that there were so many hours of training for things. And many times, people enjoyed working on the Cube group, or the Tech group, or whatever that was as well. Learning, not necessarily working.
Would you feel more comfortable if we table this for a later meeting to give you more time? Is that what you're hoping to accomplish?
Quite honestly, I wasn't really trying to accomplish anything other than I just wasn't quite sure how I wanted to vote. So this, this conversation is helpful though. And I think, you know, I think, I, I don't know that we need to table it. And I think I can be, obviously, in favor of this. I just, I personally, I think as a board member, want to be committed to getting the most out of this membership as possible. And, and that'll be a personal commitment that I make.
So before we move on with this, what are your feelings, the three of you, about how good the conference has been?
I, I, I felt that I got a lot out of it as far as professional development when I was there. So I was pleased with the conference that I attended. So I've been to one, San Diego. I, I was pleased with it.
I've been to the one we went to in Denver. Was that two or three years ago now? And I think I learned a lot. You know, it's always that give and take of, you know, you're traveling to another city, so the travel costs are incurred. And I think the, I didn't like sit down and crunch out a return on investment. But I know the things that I did there are opportunities I could probably have here, having done the MSBA trainings and different things like that. But I do know that there are things that happen in Minnesota that we haven't accessed the same way. We don't all go to the leadership things or the summer, what do they call it, the summer, summer? I want to say summer academy, but that's not right.
Back to school, MBA.
Yeah, and I went to that once and actually really enjoyed that. I went with you. And I have gone to the MSBA convention also and learned. And I just feel like, you know, that we, I think you're right. And what are we doing for continuing education that really promote or prompts us to become better board members? But also to step outside of the day-to-day grind of the decisions we're making and kind of take a big step back and as leaders, and we do governance, that's our job, right? We don't, we don't do the hiring and firing like that. We do governance. And so that does help you to kind of pull the lens back and take a bigger look at the picture. So I think there is benefit there. But I think you're also right in, are we maximizing, are we maximizing these opportunities?
And we definitely do need to have development, board development, continuous board development. But the reason I'm asking this question is because I want to know if you guys think that that's the optimal way to do it. I went for the second time this time, and, and it was good. But this time, too many times, I experienced disappointments when I went to some of the sessions. Like you expect to get all that, and then you go in there and you're like, really? That's all you were going to say? I already knew that, you know? Maybe this is an anomaly. I've only gone twice, and the first time was better. Maybe I'm hard to please, you know?
Wondering if it's also because you're in education, so your, your full-time gig? And I don't know if that's it, is, helps out with knowledge acquisition and kind of being in some of the loops. Could be. I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's why I wanted to see what, what your thoughts are.
Yeah, I, I think the time that I went, it, it was helpful to me because I feel like I went as a newer board member. You know, I got an opportunity to go within my, you know, within my first two years of being on the board. And I did feel like specifically as a newer board member that that was really beneficial just to kind of really understand more of the, the national scale. I also went and really focused and honed in on one subject matter, I think, more than anything. And that was the community engagement, which, you know, I feel like was productive. anything, and that was the community engagement, which, you know, I feel like was productive, because it has led us to our ad hoc subcommittee and kind of moving in that direction. So I feel like, I don't know that I would have advocated that as much if I hadn't had the opportunity to spend a couple of days really attending sessions and hearing what other districts were doing, and, you know, the information that was out there on that category. So I do feel like that that conference for me was, was very beneficial.
Well, it sounds to me like there's other professional development opportunities within the membership besides just the conference.
Well, and there's other boards, which I forgot to mention. Many times in MS, just like there is an MSBA, you can run for or be voluntold to be part of another group that may be of interest to you, and then you can affect, like, state policy if it's MSBA or national policy. And, you know, other districts right around us have stood, have been on those national boards, it's just really how deep you want to get involved as a school board member with the national organization, or for that matter, for the Minnesota organization. So there's layers to this, it's just how much an individual on the board wants to get involved, or what kind of goal that the board wants to set for itself about involvement in their membership organizations, really.
Either way, regardless, we can take this to the vote and decide what you guys want to do, but either way, it sounds like maybe if it's possible to have additional information provided about some of the other paths or tracks, if we could do that. And then even to the point of, I don't know if Dawn would be doing that or whatever, but just the financial benefits with the conference piece without, and I know that you haven't wanted to commit tonight, and I appreciate that, but maybe this, maybe it is a wash, and it ends up being, membership alone makes it worth its while to go to the conference, and then if there's more to it than that, there's not, but...
Why don't we just put some information in the update for you, and then if you want to discuss it more, it'll be up to you all. Does that make some sense?
Yep.
We'll pull some things, and if, some of it will be just off the website, but I think some of the structures and the committees and the other offerings, just to look at that, and then we will look back. I know we do the conference recap on how much we're spending at the local level, but we'll look up those early bird and the, because I just don't want to speak off the top of my head, and the, and then the membership versus non-membership, and then the access to some of the other subcommittees or sublearnings and professional development things, so that, that we can do. Between Dawn and I, she will be out of the district, I think, herself this week, so you might look for that in the, not this update, but the following week, if that's all right.
You guys want to move forward with the vote, or you want to wait until we've had that information provided? We got to go forward with the vote, we're just either unapproved or not approved versus approving it, because it's a motion that's on the table right now.
Personally, I'd feel better if we could just hold off until the next meeting.
That's fine. I, it doesn't matter, it's, it doesn't impact anything timeline-wise, as long as we get a decision made where we would make the payment this fiscal year, so.
I think it'd be important to see that data, and then to have all the board members here.
So, we, can we talk about, we get a, just, we have to bring it to a vote, right? But we've all just abstained.
There's a motion on the table, we just oppose it, just say no. If everyone just says no, then the motion...
Or it could be abstained, and then that.
Abstained, yeah.
But abstain is meant to be used only if there's a conflict of interest, right?
It might be an amendment, you might want to just amend the motion to table for tonight.
Oh.
And then we'll bring it back, and then I'm thinking if you want to do that, then what we probably should do is, rather than the update, we should probably put it on a work-study session, as a, so that you can have a conversation with it too, because if it goes into the update, then it's, 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 you don't have that give and take, and the other board members might want to weigh in as well. I had a work session, so we can lay out some of the stuff, and then you can just talk about it. So maybe we could do that.
So do I have to create a motion to amend the motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to, can I make the motion?
You can.
Like to make an emotion to amend that motion?
Mm-hmm.
Of voting on the National School Board Association membership?
I'd just like to table it.
Table, to table it.
Till, and you can say, to table it, or you can say, it can be table, or do we have to have a date certain, Dawn?
No, just a...
Okay, then we're good.
Table to a future meeting.
Yeah.
That's the motion I'm making.
Okay, so what happens?
Somebody has a second, right?
She's amending the motion, so she'd have to have a maker and a second.
A second?
And then if, if that's a friendly, I think I've got this right, if that's a friendly motion and you all pass it, then the motion carries. Is that correct, Dawn? Yeah, I think I've got that right. Yeah.
A second, yeah.
Who made the original motion?
Oh, I guess I did.
Well, John.
And then Natty amended it.
Who was the second?
And then he seconded the amendment.
Who was the second to that motion, first?
Hang on, I got it.
That was me, yeah. I made the motion. Can I?
Oh, because then you can make a friendly amendment, that's...
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Yeah.
Or did Holla do it?
Holla was the...
Holla is your motion.
Holla made the motion.
You made the motion.
Then you seconded it.
And if you both agree that it's an acceptable, a friendly amendment, then we can vote on the, to table it.
That's just one vote, and we table it?
Yep.
If that's what the group decides.
I do. I do.
Okay. Lauren, you okay with that?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
You're gonna have to, you're gonna have to, we're gonna have to take it to a vote, the amendment to a vote.
That's what I was...
What?
Yeah, that's right. I just said that to him, and he's going, I was just going to do that.
I hope they play this one on YouTube.
Do we have to vote on this?
Thanks.
I was kind of working my way there. Anyway, okay, so.
Roberts.
Motion by Holla, second by Natty with the amendment to table it. Of all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It's tabled. Board topics.
Can't even think right now.
I wanted to remind everyone that the Beauty and the Beast musical will be on this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
Sunday. No Saturday this week.
No Saturday? Okay.
Thursday, Friday, Sunday this week. It's 7:00, 7:00, and 2:00 are the times.
Well, that's Sunday?
Yeah, Sunday is...
Okay, I have wrong information.
And then next week is Friday, Saturday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Okay. We'll start over. Thursday, Friday, Sunday. This week, 7:00 PM, 7:00 PM, 2:00 PM. And then next week, Thursday, Friday, no, Friday, Saturday, Sunday next week, and at 7:00 PM, 7:00 PM, 2:00 PM.
Is this information available online?
I'm looking at it, it's right here.
Where is it at?
It's on our district calendar.
It's also on Facebook. District has done a nice job of Columbia Heights Public Schools Facebook pages, been doing a good job of promoting it, so.
There's also some posters around too, so. And that may have been a change, what was in the original district printed calendar, so kind of go with the online calendar. And just to add in addition to your, the reason why there's no Saturday show is it's prom on Saturday. So the grand march is at 5:00 over at the high school, so if you want to see the kids dressed in their finest, ready to impress, and then they'll celebrate prom, and come back and see Beauty and the Beast on Sunday.
The district calendar says it's Saturday, this Saturday, so that might need to be corrected. Not seeing that.
Online? The online one?
I'm, oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking in the wrong place.
I think the online...
Never mind. Yeah, I'm looking at the online one, but I looked in the wrong spot.
Okay. Anybody else with board topics?
Yep. Valley View Fine Arts Night is Thursday, May 7th. It says from 5:00 to 11:00 PM on the calendar, but I'm thinking it's not that rocking of